Call to order, the town of Matt's is their planning board meeting for September 25th, 2024. Welcome aboard. Here we are. All right, well, let's first kick it off with some introductions. So I'm Chair William Hanley, Vice Chair Tracy Loftus Keller. We've got a regular board member, Anne Dalton. We've got new alternate member. Yeah. Dan Burke. And we've got a regular member, Gail Marshall, regular member, member Alan Kimerly. And so tonight, actually, we've got a full board and one alternate. So we're in good shape. And then if you are on Zoom, I'm sure we all know Zoom protocol by now. And greetings and out there in Zoom world. And if you are on Zoom, please just sign in on chat. Keep yourself muted and away we go. So first item on the agenda tonight, we've got approval of minutes and the minutes are from the 11th of September.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right, let's keep going. So third item on the agenda tonight, we've got a continuation from August 14. With that, we were dealing with the, the board was dealing with section 4.3 non-conforming structures. And specifically, section 4.3.6 reconstruction or replacement. Not going to read all that. And section 4.3.5 relocation. And again, the applicants is Dodge Point LLC agent is Tim Broch, through Heyward. Location is 29 Dodge Point Road, Seal Harbor, tax map one lot 17, the zone is Shoreland Residential 2. Purpose reconstruction replacement of a non-conforming structure. And was this one advertised in Imberly?
First of all, you need to divulge. You're, you weren't at the 14th meeting?
I was just gonna do that. So was this one advertised and others notified?
No, this was a continuation.
It's a continuation. So thank you. I know it's a continuation. I was not at the 14th meeting. And just to clarify, if a board member is not at a hearing and they wish to participate, well, they gotta get up to speed with the application. So I I have their original application material. I read minutes. Familiarize, familiarized myself with the application and been down there for previous site visits. And I signed affidavit that I had done so. So I am participating as a voting member of the board tonight, this application. And I understand that you guys were here on the 14th, the board did an initial review of the application and then asked for some additional information before proceeding with the review further. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to the applicant and let the, let them take it from here.
Do you want to know first what the additional information you were looking for?
Can certainly summarize that, please.
Okay.
At the meeting on August 14th, at the end of the review process, you guys had asked for additional information. You wanted the DDP permit by rule. You want an arborist report. You wanted the shoreline impact of relocation and the shoreline impact of current design. So that's him taking away.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, so basically, we provided a package last week addressing all of the items that Kim just mentioned. And I just wanted to go through them real quickly. The first was the MDP permit. We put an application together. This fall was under their permit by rule process. They have a very similar review standard in that it's within the 75 foot setback. We have to prove to them why I can't go back. So to keep things consistent, we provided them with the exact same materials that board has. They didn't get any additional studies, maps, plans. What you have, what is what we submitted to them. We had several conversations with them and they asked a few just general questions and they issued our permit on, I think it was the 5th. And I closed with the permit application, which is just the first page. The full application is on file in office. I have just the first application page and the approval attached, taken to the back of that. In their review, as I said, they need to follow a lot of standards like the board does. And basically, their determination was that rebuilding in the same location is the least environmentally impacting. That's what they look at. But it's the least environmentally impacted for the project. And that was their determination that rebuild it in the same location. That's that criteria. The second item was to get a forester's report. So we had them look and take a look at environment's pre-service and they basically came back and gave us a proposal that indicated if we take the building down, don't replace it in the same location, that there are subtle trees that would need to be cabled off to, and hopefully ensure that they don't flow over during windstorms. Then that report that he provided outlines his proposal to try, make an attempt to stabilize the trees on the site. And then the third item was they, if we could find a spot where we can relocate it outside of the 75 foot. He wanted to see what that impacted means. And we found one marginal location. It does have some problems, but it's the best we could do to get it outside of the 75. And that's the big plan we have in front of you, that we highlighted in think the, the impact area. Basically, we moved it just outside of the 75 foot. It requires about 1,700 yards, cubic yards of fill to build it up in there, about 10 feet. And it also results in a significant loss of your forest. A lot of the fill areas still extend into the 75 foot. So, but there is no structure in the 75 foot zone. But that basically was the the location that we could find that we could try to make it work. But it still has some problems in that location. And as we indicated in the cover letter with the material that we submitted to you, it does result in a permanent visual change to the entire site that on a fell changes the shoreline zoning area. And then does not seem to be a practical alternative. And with that, I'll open it up for questions before.
The only boys got questions.
Well, I actually don't think that I do. I do appreciate that you went to this extra effort. I think that our problem is that if we're going to prove something like this, the burden has unlike applications outside of that zone when the presumption is in favor of the applicant. It's not when it's so close to the shore. And we have to make sure that we have a record that establishes all of the criteria for approval. And I think this has been helpful to address some of those questions that we've had with us. Um, there was only one other thing, and I don't think, I don't want to throw in new, particularly throwing a issue in here, but is there are there floodplain issues here on this site? How do you, you must have addressed those.
Yeah, we did with our building permit and the floodplain is actually the wetland area that you can see on the plan and gear. And that extends up into the site on that side, but it doesn't, doesn't actually get to this location. It's very, very close, but it's very difficult in that.
So as we've done this before, there's not a very specific checklist for.
Maybe someday.
Maybe someday. For reviewing non-conforming.
Well, we have this standards.
Well, that's right. We, we do have the standards and and I think we should absolutely follow along with that. And I'm just kind of looking back to the section 4.3, 4.36 and 4.35, you know, and the, you know, the I think the operative not the operative review criteria is that, you know, we've, we've got to make sure that, you know, the location that they're proposing it to be an informed source conforms to what we are reviewing to the greatest practical extent and that, you know, one of the the, the major criterias we're looking at, criteria we're looking at is just the, the impact to the, to the landscape. And with the documents they've, they've provided here, I mean, showing what would happen if you guys did relocate it behind the 75 foot setback, mature tree growth and the impact thereof is always a major consideration for the board. And that's, that's a pretty significant impact. And able to use it back of 12,000 square feet and destroying, you know, sizable footprint and mature true growth. You know, other things we're looking at is, you know, what's what's it, you know, is, is moving it back, going to alter existing topography, which also impacts, you know, existing drainage courses. And it looks like if they were to move it back, you're going to have a significant amount of fill around the building. You're going to be altering, you know, grade elevations significantly. That's another consideration. You're, you're also talking about it. Can you talk about the proposed foundation type for the building a little bit?
In order to try to minimize the impacts, as I kind of I think I described in my cover letter there, that we anticipated not doing a full foundation under this move of the building, but just put it onto a slab or even posts, which is what it's the current foundation of the existing building is. So that we, because it's all legs there too, put a full foundation after blast led. Even if we moved it back and wanted a full foundation under it. So we just said, well, right now it's this plan here considers it on a slab or.
So you're minimizing the impact of the foundation integrating system?
Yeah.
Topography with keeping it in its.
And where the existing building didn't really have the foundation, it didn't seem like we should consider that on moving it because it would be a greater impact. It would just, you know, leaning towards its more impact, even though.
Talk a little bit about how, where's where is the existing septic system? Is there one? How, how is that?
This goes to a pump station in the road and is hooked to the municipal.
So you're not limited by an existing field or anything like?
And we did note that in our package information that it was on public sewer. So the impacts on onsite wastewater disposal fields is applicable on this.
Kind of paint the picture here.
The pilings wouldn't be better than a slab?
We probably.
God willing, it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to get down to solid conditions. We couldn't do a slab on fill. We'd never get the right compaction. So we'd probably drive down with some piles and, and tie the slab to the ledge below. Disconnect to the ledge.
And you're not required to have like a breakaway foundation or any, an open foundation system because you're, you're out of the floodplain there.
Right, exactly. We would be above the floodplain and we would just have to have mechanical spaces in the, in the upper floor.
You're like what, 24 feet or so above the? I mean, the, the building itself or the topography is like 24, 26 feet above. Is that above the shore? Is that, you've got the elevation lines here?
So this building right here?
Yeah.
Is, yeah, is above.
It's, it comes and goes, but.
Yeah, but this here sits up above.
Which is why you're high.
Above 22 feet above, like the lowest, well, this right here is your highest annual tide, which is seven, and the building is probably at 26. So you're 18 and a half. You know what floodplain zone you're in? It's a VE 12, which is this line right here. You can follow this contour here. So your bottom of structure has to be.
One foot above.
One foot above that. So you're. Yeah, but we're, we're well above.
13 and they're going to get 26? Or say 24 or 26? Well, it comes and goes under the.
Oh, the floor? Oh, this is at 26, yes.
They're way above it.
They're way above. Questions, comments, considerations?
Yeah.
I think this drawing was very helpful sentimental too, because of context, what what kind of footprint and impact footprint this could potentially have and trying to relocate it via controlling structure behind 75 foot setback.
Can I ask a question? At the last hearing, Tim, there was a question about a portion of the structure being outside the footprint. That's within 25 feet. This was, I think it was the area here. Right, there was a, as part of the draw, I mean, the overall footprint is reduced.
Oh.
But you said you were.
Yeah, there's, that was a landscape architectural, architect schematic for that. We would, it was a path that came toward doorway there.
Landing or some type of?
It was just a dirt, but we wouldn't do that anyway.
They're not going to do it?
No.
Okay, so that's it. So you're not expanding beyond existing footprint?
No, we're not expanding beyond existing footprint anyway.
The board understands that there's different tiers of compliance when you're within the 75 foot setback. There's the zero to 25, which is you know, the no-go zone is essentially about as limiting as it gets. And then 25 to 75. So if you're not doing anything in the 25, that's the other applicants have.
Well, this is a message. Let's see what we can do. The board has reviewed the application under 4.3 non-conforming structures. And finds that the replacements has complied with the provisions that of 4.3, 4.6 in that it is within the required setback, but will be completely removed in order to be replaced. Yep. Please do.
What about a motion?
Your first 4.3.6 is determining whether you have jurisdiction.
Yes.
So you already know you do, because this is being completely torn down and you go.
So why, why don't we?
And then you go to 4.3.5.
Right, so we do it backwards. So let's, let's first get a motion that we have jurisdiction to do that.
We want a motion that we have jurisdiction. I move that we have, make a motion that we have jurisdiction. The 4.3.6.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right, then we, then we go to 4.3.5.
Okay.
And the, this is the these are, yeah. You know.
Okay, so I move that the site of relocation for this building conforms to all setback requirements. I'm using a printed text here. So Heidi, so that might, do you have this form, Heidi?
I have that form.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I see where you are, the very beginning.
Yes, to the greatest practical extent. In that the board finds that subsurface wastewater disposal rules do not apply because it will be a public sewer. That we find the fact, that fact and as a conclusion of law, therefore doesn't apply. The topography.
So like the topography is more advantageous in the present condition because if they did move it back, there would be a broader impact to the system.
Right, the topography limits the ability to replace the structure to the existing site. And we find that it is provided by maps and other data that, that the applicant has provided. And we therefore find exclusion of law that, that these existing site based upon its parking, the site of the land is the best. Most.
You could reference specifically the 917 24. I'm not supposed to make motions.
No, I, well, I know, but it's, I, I, we've got to have forms for these. This is crazy.
Doing it? Fantastic.
Yeah, right. Thank you. I'll take that. The existing structure, the footprint of the existing structure is the best practical location for rebuilding this structure on this site as evidenced by it's the existing structure relocation sketch. And we therefore find as a, as a conclusion of law that to be the case. Potential for soil erosion is minimized by using the existing site because it is essentially solid ledge. And if we required relocation to another possible site, there would be a significant input of fill that would also, also alter the topography and create the potential for erosion and other similar damage. So based upon those findings, we find as a conclusion of law that to the greatest practical extent, erosion is minimized by any replacement building where the current building is. Other structures on the property and adjacent properties, we find based upon the existing structural relocation map and the plans for the other structures that have already been approved that they're based upon the setback requirements on the lot and relative to the other buildings that there isn't, there's only this other location that we've already indicated was more destructive than the existing site. So based upon those findings, we find as a conclusion of law that the existing site is the best relative to the adjacent, the other structures and adjacent on this property.
Can, can I ask some, if you did move it back, would it be within the setback to the other structures?
No, I can't. It's right on it.
It's right on it.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, so the proximity would decrease to the other structures.
Right. Which only matters if it gets, it gets me too close.
Yeah, sometimes, I mean, like groupings of buildings, if you can spread them out, sometimes you're just.
Well, sure, aesthetically, I think that's the issue. But in terms of the code, as long as any setback requirements or don't bump up. Accessory in a principal, there is no setback between.
It's not very good.
No, two, just principal structures. This is accessory. This won't have a kitchen in it, according to what you guys know. It has a kitchen, but not sleeping quarters. Oh, yeah, it's not a dwelling unit. So it's not a principal, it would be an accessory structure. So there's no setbacks between two buildings, just two principal buildings. If you can. To meet this criteria, if they have to meet that criteria as well.
The location of of the structure relative to existing structures would be, the current distance would be maintained with this.
Right, right.
As.
But it is a criteria that has to, and do that.
It's so, so we, we've encountered with town council before, you know, these kind of projects that we don't have to be, you don't have to meet every single criteria. You don't have to be whatever it is, six and O.
So you would argue that it's not, it's not particularly relevant?
I, I don't think it's particularly relevant in this case.
Okay, so with respect to backing up for a moment. With respect to the location of all structures on the property and adjacent properties, the board finds as a matter of fact that this is an accessory structure and there are no setback requirements relative to the main structures, like that this that, that criteria is not dispositive of the issue and is not relevant given the other factors that we'll be considering. Does that make sense?
Keep going.
Cynical. All right. Well, I've already mentioned the location of the subject system and other onsite soil suitable subject systems is not finding fact is that's not relevant because this is connected to public sewer. So the conclusion is that that provision does not apply to this application. Vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. The board finds that the least impact, given the manner of construction anticipated and destruction and construction anticipated, the least impact to the existing vegetation would be to rebuild the structure on its current in its current position. And therefore find as a conclusion of law that, that, that that criteria has been met.
That's a primary consideration.
Right. Um. Who do you think you should get to? They've, they've gotten you that. Therefore, the board finds that the standards of section 4.3.5 have been complied with by this application. As a, as a matter of fact, and a conclusion of law. Say what? This is a 3.6? Or?
One.
Well, let's, let's get through this four point three five motion.
Are we going?
We have a motion for four point three point six that. I don't remember what it was, but.
Well, the.
So we're now on four point three point five, and I believe you hit all the one, two.
All the three, two.
I think you hit all five. Five, six.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, um, the board also finds that the plans. Provide for any tree, any tree or landscaping damage. Occasioned by the destruction of the existing property and the replacement of the building of the replacement. Um. The plan provides for. Supporting the existing. And we're minimizing the impact to wood innovation, but vegetation. And that there's a plan, there is a plan to restore to the greatest extent, to damage. To, to create, to provide for minimal damage. To the vegetation, the trees and vegetation and replace or restore any that are damaged in the process. Uh, in constant with the provisions of four point. Three point, four point five.
I see the checklist along. This. This form doesn't. This doesn't mention foundations, but the four point three six.
Period there. Um. The board finds that. Assuming to four point six, that the applicant poses. Complete removal of the existing structure, so. Damage or destruction greater than fifty percent of market value and a replacement structure. That is no larger than the original structure. So, and, and that the existing footprint will remain the same as the. Uh, the, the replacement footprint will be the same as the existing footprint and therefore. The provisions of four point six have, will be complied with.
Thanks for the views, the footprint by forty square feet.
Yes, within.
Yeah, within the original footprint of the building.
So is that how you'd like the?
Yeah, alright, okay. They're not using the same footprint.
Okay, alright. Um. So the applicant has provided, it, it will be replacing. The structure with a structure that has a footprint that is forty square feet less. And it will be all located within the existing footprint. And therefore complies with four point six.
Don't, don't even ask.
No.
Thank you very much. We trust you. You don't speak double to them? That's what I'm gonna ask, where are those points? I think I'm done, you'll have to tell me if you think I'm not done.
Did you mention anything about the foundation?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I cannot remove it, I cannot do it.
I know, I'm sorry.
I can't reset. Three or four pages.
Yes.
Uh, I mean.
Hit some high points.
I've got some, okay. Board finds the subsurface wastewater system does not apply the public sewer. Uh, it, because the, the building is on public sewer, therefore it is not applicable regards to topography. It limits the ability to replace the structure to, uh. To the existing site as shown on the map provided, existing site is found to be the best site, sorry, that doesn't make sense. The footprint of the existing structure is the best practical site is shown by existing structure relocation survey. Soil erosion, solid ledge and relocation to another site is a significant increase. It requires a significant increase of fill based on the findings, uh, erosion. It will be minimized to the greatest practical extent. Existing properties based on setback required, only one other location which is more. There's only one other location which is more. Uh, destructive than the existing. Um, they find the current site is best in proximity to the other structure, uh. Is best proximity to the other structures would decrease. Regarding vegetation, I don't know, we went back to other structures, current distance to the other structures will be maintained on the current site. Um, okay, respect to the location of other structures, the accessory structure and no requirements.
I also can't mention that we're not setback.
Yes, something. Uh, the, the location of other structures as an accessory structure is not dispositive or relevant or to. I, I think that's, what was that, I'm sorry, it was a lot of words.
Yes.
Vegetation, the board finds the least impact, um, that. Sorry. Uh, least impact, um, is to leave the structure in the current location. Um. The. Criteria has been met. And then therefore standards of four point three point six have been met, the board also finds plans provided for tree and landscaping. Damage rebuilding provides for supporting, um. Existing trees and. Uh, there's a plan to provide for minimal, uh, for minimal damage and replacement and restoring of, um. Trees within the provisions of four point three point five. I'm sorry, it really will be better, it's, it's a very difficult motion. Board finds that pursuant to four point six. The applicant proposes the complete removal of up to fifty percent or. Greater and replacement and footprint will remain the same. The footprint will be reduced by forty square feet, the provisions of four point three point six will be complied with. Um. And again, the application will be, applicant will be replacing with forty percent square, uh, forty square feet less. Uh. Within the existing footprint. Sorry, I know it sounds.
You were filling my pen.
That's, uh, yeah.
Everybody get the gist of that. General motion.
Yeah. That's all one, the general motion?
It's gonna be one big. We need a.
I have a second, Alan.
Alan got it. We know she's so wanted, can't. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Then we've got two forms to sign here, so.
Do you want these copies of these maps?
If you want me to take them back, I'll.
I think merely mentioning it to know was a huge step forward. Progress beyond that.
I have. Mentioned some things. The last time I mentioned it was the morning after I went to one reason for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You have to. Want those signed copies and.
I won't sign, yeah. I thought we were waiting to come in and meeting agenda and bring the phones, although I had asked you to bring the phones for me. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Alright, sticking with the theme of non-conforming structures. Tonight, we also have the northeast. Yeah. The northeast, uh, tonight, we also have the Northeast Harbor Tennis Club, the agent is Greg Johnson, G F Johnson Associates. Forty-four Manchester Road, Northeast Harbor, tax tab twenty-five, lot twenty. Zone is Shoreland Residential Two, and the purpose is reconstruction, replacement of non-conforming structures. We had a site inspection at four thirty and was this one advertised in the others?
Yes, it was advertised in the Mount Desert Islander, uh, on September twelfth. For two thousand twenty-four, and I noticed it went out to the others on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll ask if there's any conflict of interest on the board. None heard, we had a site inspection at four thirty and. Perhaps. Anne could tell us about her observations from the site inspection.
Alright, uh, we all attended, except for, it was not there, the site inspection of the Northeast Harbor Swim Club. Uh, Greg, uh, explained, and Stephanie explained to us, uh, the damage that occurred during the winter storms and the spring storms we had last year. Um, they walked us out to the site where we observed the. Uh, disruption to the under decking and the damage to the swimming pool, and Greg explained, uh. The history a little bit of, of the construction of the. Saltwater swimming pool, which is, um. Created by the construction of a dike system which allows water to flow back and forth. Um, from the ocean into the pool area. And I also explained to us that the level of the swimming pool would be raised to about eleven feet from its. Feet, but. Current location, current, um, height. And there would be a construction of an entryway into the saltwater swimming pool to bring. Um, the swimmers closer to the entry of that pool to alleviate the disparity in height. Anything else?
You guys wanna add anything else? Uh, I noticed that, uh, a lot of the. The saltwater pool, construction of it was very old and outdated and somewhat falling apart. In, in need of massive repair and door just removed and totally replaced. And I, I just add that in general, I mean, it was. I think we all observed that it really took a beating in the spring storms.
As the other places around the island and the state have from the. The big storms have been.
With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, uh, where I think we covered, uh, most of it, but, uh, just for, take, we can sort of kind of run through it. Um, so we've got a few elements, I'll, I'll go through one time to the, the dike theme. The enclosure, um, that creates the swimming, uh, the saltwater swimming pool. Is structure that extends up to here, uh, this is here, we're talking about the saltwater swimming pool, this dike. Going to be, uh, replaced in this current, current footprint. Um, the freshwater pool, like all freshwater in the practice, who is this here, um. It currently extends, um. Into the saltwater structure here, reconstructing the freshwater pool and raising it, um. And in doing so, um, the pool is not designed, they're not designed to withstand, uh, exterior forces. Uh, and the current footprint of that, um, we're going to construct a surf wall. Um. The third element of that, as you said, this is raised, um. We're constructing, uh, an accessibility route that allows folks to maintain that relationship, which is now maybe a three or four foot jump into the saltwater pool. Um, we're raising it becomes eight and, and dangerous, um, that is only within, um, the structure, uh, that we're talking about. And, um, I think we've, uh, discussed before that it's a, uh, the ordinance, um. A commercial recreational outdoor facility, um, and I think we had a good question on board is, what is the principal structure? Um, principal structure, if you would go there to swim, which is the swimming, uh, facility itself that's enclosed by, um, the deck. Uh, the only thing I would mention, um, that maybe wasn't covered as part of this two walk, uh, narrow, um. The top walking surface is going to be extended by about two feet, so two people can pass, um, on there to the lifeguard or, um, worker, um, people. Um, and so that, that generally, uh, describes the, the scope, um, not getting really into the buildings, um. You have to build a road and get in there and demo, you see a lot of stuff is, is destroyed and, um. Um, in need of repair, so, um, that's the, the scope in entirety and sort of the segments, um. They're all interconnected as part of a structure, um, this is a wall that probably gets to about nine feet here. Um, to the existing stone that is on outside here, it's probably a three foot drop to here, um, and then depending what the tide is doing out here. Um, it certainly controls the elements of the tide with the, the spuce states. Um. But all the work proposed is within the entire footprint, um, we also pointed out that we had to build. And permanently, the TDP, a temporary road down here, um, they did several drawings, um. Definitely, the warning torch logs and, um, interior, this has been built, um. Gravel, they graded as a beach, um, that was done last winter as part of it, um. And so it's truly constructed, uh, man-made structure that's contained, and, um, so I would pass it up the board to go through the multi-facets of non-conformity. Any, any standing questions?
I have one question, and that's. Can you explain a little bit more what exactly a surge wall?
Um, yeah, so, um. The, the surf walls, we're walking on the outside edge of this pool, um, when water pops. It slams into, oh, who's made of a, a guy, uh, really doesn't, not designed to resist what is a wave surge, so. At that line, we'll have a surf wall, which is basically a concrete wall with what gates in it to break and disperse it, so the pool itself. Which is a guy element, isn't paid in the brunt of, uh, storm circles. Barrier.
How high is that wall?
Uh, that wall is. Probably eighty, and there's an existing wall now there, but it probably. And the location of the pool itself is staying the same, correct? So is the.
So is the surge? I'm trying to get an idea of the we've got the pool, the surge wall, and then the lower deck and pools, the highest element, then you have the surge wall, and then the lowest element is the lower deck.
That's correct. Yeah. So just in in as we have this, this line here, what you see is the outside air, the on the cool flat surface around now is out here. There is a wall here that they moved up to the edge and have taken sitting in the surge wall with.
So the surge wall like slopes up?
Uh, no, it's a vertical wall. Oh, yeah, a vertical wall. It's a
big wall.
Yep.
Big wide.
Yeah, it's a a mass wall that.
So what happens to the deck in most circumstances when it's working as a search wall?
Uh, well, the deck's going to be raised.
So the so the deck caps the top of the surge wall.
Correct.
No.
Yep, the deck. Basically, the deck we're standing on today, you know, will have a break wall underneath it and will be higher.
So you're not even you're not even going to see the surge wall other than maybe that two and a half, three foot height elevation between the the pool elevation and the lower deck.
Correct. Yep. And basically what? There is a wall there now. It's failed with guides inside of that. It doesn't make sense to have a failing element that you're protection on the right against the pool. You need space to have that mass absorb.
What's that all gonna be?
It could be twenty-four. Say amazingly enough, when we go underneath there now, but we're putting for that one, it is probably four and six feet wide at the edge of the pool.
Are we going to consider that this in terms of reconstruction? We've got the fifty percent market value issue should front. This has been damaged. Are we going to consider the destruction and the rebuild? That that needs that requirement, or do we need an appraisal about in respect to the extent of the damage that's already occurred? How would we pose when handled that? Being completely with plans.
Yeah.
All right, so. Okay.
Yeah.
That's why he's here. Okay.
So we need to put a stick knowledge that they
Right.
We need that criteria at the end here.
I guess, oh, before we do that, though, let me just remember protocol and ask if there's any public comment on this application. Gone once. Twice. Now's the time to, oh, there you go, Mr. Met Metzger.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi.
My my wife Anne Metzger is here. And we are happily members of the tennis club and the pool, and we have followed this proposal. We understand the damage. We've enjoyed the facility for generations. And we think that Greg Johnston and Matthew Baird and the whole team have done a terrific job in organizing and preparing a a plan for the future that will withstand the changes of nature and provide us with many years and generations of enjoyment to come. So we endorse the proposal and hope that you will concur.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hey, any other public comment? I'm not hearing any, and I'm not seeing any. Right, we're going to close public comments and we will first have to make a determination if the application is completed.
I move the application simply.
Second that. All those in favor? I would love to make a recommendation to use a short form checklist, but I I it's okay. It's all right. I was trying to make a funny there. I think don't. Simmer down. We don't have it. Don't have it.
We have a short form.
Noel, if you're hearing us out there. We don't have checklist for non-conforming project review.
Oh, but I'm all warmed up now.
But Gail is warmed up. All right, so let's let's just get into this then. Do we need first need a motion that we're even that we have the jurisdiction that look you can review this?
I move we have jurisdiction to review this because this is a reconstruction. This is a replacement of non-conforming structure that is located, not only located less than the required setback from water body. The water body was actually in the water body and to significant extent. I'll set it back.
It's a reconstruction and replacement.
You do you want that in there? Reconstruction and replacement?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you can put it, we can put it in there. It's it's almost six one hundred percent of the other than this place, but we're moving in place.
Alan seconded them.
I did not.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. The board finds pursuant to four point three point five. That the size of the lot is one point six eight acres. And it is already based upon the documents provided, including the permit plan map. It is already almost entirely developed.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I interrupt? Can you just say the acreage again?
One point six eight. And therefore, there is no potential for relocation.
I'm just, I'm going to chime in.
Good.
Also, considering the use of the non-conformly, that it's completely impractical to consider that you could relocate this.
Yes.
This unique structure.
Yes.
Is that part of the motion?
Oh, Gail.
Well, yes. So and then so our conclusion is that the size of the lot requires that the existing locations be reused. And furthermore, the topography or the slope of the land.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sorry.
Yeah, slope of the land. With regard to the topography of the slope of the land, we find that the only possible location for a freshwater pool and is the saltwater pool is their current location. And the which is essentially out over the some sound and the existing, the land behind it is is extremely steep. And therefore, and and already largely built upon and is therefore not a practical relocation of this facility. The potential for soil erosion, we used to try, we need to put this anyplace else on the property because of the sloping. And because of the size of the and type of structure would be prohibitive if you tried to put it anyplace else. So the conclusion is that
There's just no.
There's no other place that this could possibly be located on this lot. Similarly, with respect to the location of other structures on the property. It's already fully, the property is already fully employed, and this is, once again, the only place you could rebuild these particular structures. The septic, with regard to the septic system that we find is not relevant because this facility pumps up to a field across the Manchester Road and then goes and is connected to therefore then connects to town sewer.
Yeah, no, it just pumps up to a outdoor manhole, right?
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. Okay. And therefore, the board finds that subject systems are not germane to this application. With regard to vegetation to be removed to accomplish relocation, there's there is no relocation possible, and there and there is no vegetation. Well, the only vegetation is marine vegetation, and there is a plan in place to sequester any marine vegetation during the construction and then to return it to its existing location once construction is complete. So the board concludes that the vegetation requirements of four point three point five are not are are complied with. With regard to approval conditions. The board finds that applications have been made to D E P and the Army Corps, and those are pending action. Therefore, the board would want to condition approval of any application on the on obtaining those 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 permissions from. And in concluding, the board finds that the provisions of four point three point five, as they relate to four point three point six have been met in this application. Both as a matter of fact and law.
The second.
Oh, okay, sure.
You know what? Us, you know.
I second it. Okay. With regard, so the board also.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you guys.
Well, we can add, we can, we can. We can add to that and do it separately, whichever you prefer.
Why don't we do it separately since she just.
Yes.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Greg just raised his hand. I was trying to get that.
Just for completeness, in around the erosion control, we'd also like to
Oh.
Know that you submitted a
Yes.
A substantial site protection.
Yes.
Measures which includes silos and temporary measures. It's the part that also recesses and is in erosion.
Yes, the well, we can, we can do it at this point. We can do it as a separate finding. The board finds that the applicant, with regard to soil erosion, the board finds the applicant submitted extensive plans to minimize and mitigate any potential soil erosion during this construction process and indicate and demonstrated a plan to meet remediate any potential soil damage occasioned by the concern. And therefore, has complied with the provisions of four point three point five.
I'll check it out.
Any further discussion on that? No hands being raised. All those in favor?
Aye. With regard to four point three point six. The board finds that the reconstructed or replaced structure is less than the required setback. And however, will be no larger than the existing stru- the footprint of the existing structure. And therefore, applies with four point three point six. You want me to again talk about vegetation? And that provision because it's in six.
You talk.
I mentioned. Is there more? I I I think that's that's it. They're using exact same.
Well, are they when with the port rock being widened?
Well, I had a question about that, but it is my my for myself, but because it's not extending beyond the existing rip rip rap, which is part of that structure.
So they're they're widening it. They're not going past the furthest point of nonconformity.
That's correct. That's how. That's the argument, and I think seems to make sense.
There you go. So that was a motion.
Is that part of the motion?
Is that part of it?
I think we should say something like that, that they're not going past the
Is that true?
The outermost point of nonconformity.
Sure, I can start that motion over again. We can. All right. So with regard to Okay, well, I haven't figured the footprint. Yeah, let's hold off on all the largest thirty about six.
Are we talking four, three, six?
Yeah.
Four point three point six.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the footprint, it's though, isn't the outermost edge of the footprint isn't changing, but I.
The footprint is not being proposed to be any more nonconforming.
Correct.
Than it presently is.
Correct.
And and it is not expanding beyond the outermost point of nonconformity.
Correct. Someone.
Any?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? You know, thinking.
No.
No.
Well, I think you's you go from the outer limit of the rip rap, granted, that's there, but that's the structure. That's the edge of this.
It's an essential part of the start.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Country doesn't stand.
All right, it's wrong, good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
You mentioned. Well, probably from notions.
Oh, sure. Um, yes, you prove, well, the approval condition should include the receipt of a permit for this work from the Department of Environmental Protection and the Army Corps of Engineers.
And the town, the construction project. From the town.
Right, doesn't go. Right, doesn't go with them. So those two would be the only.
So we're taking out the construction permit, is that what?
Yes.
Okay, and are we making a motion to approve pending receipt? Is that what we're doing or?
We're making a much approved conditional. Upon receipt of those.
I second that. So this is your motion for approval of the application based upon those conditions?
Yes.
Helen seconded that, any further discussion? But he's good, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's congratulations.
Yeah, it was, it's obviously. Yeah, you can't, uh, you wouldn't want members.
I'll say ten years on the board, that was the most unique application, I think. Amazingly unique structure.
We said there, it's a good thing you got it built before.
Yeah, so we gotta sign those two.
Do you have any news for these maps you gave us?
Next time we do the pool building.
The pile?
The pile. That's the recycling.
I'll take anything I brought for last applicants.
And we can just recycle it, yeah, we recycle.
Yeah, I mean, one time I'll take them, if you don't want the freeing binders or you guys, like, I'll recycle them, but. And if you leave them here and the binders, I, once in a while, will just come get binders. So.
You don't want the masks? So I think what we need to do is, is get Noel, we need, we need to get Noel on our agenda. To come in with.
Did you hear that, Kim?
And I had actually said to him, maybe we could have what the work party does have before. So that we could come having. Read it.
We'll put that under other and along with our. Uh, update from the land use zoning ordinance advisory.
And, um, we are. The grain is a little fried after this meeting, so. I gotta do this from memory, we. Are going to. Talk about the proposed soul ordinance. Um, at the next meeting, I'm hoping that I'm going to get some. Documents sent out to members soon, I wrote last week. To know about that. And said he's gonna be doing this week, so I will. Speak to him. We, um. We are going to also be talking about the, the draft table of uses. And the definition section, which Noel has presented an expanded, more comprehensive list of those items. We've already gotten those, but they probably need to be respent and it is a bit of. Drudgery going through them, but it's very helpful to read through definitions and. To know that there, if nothing else, is to know that there are lots of definitions that you can use when you're looking at these. We also do need to have a conversation with council still. About what happened to the subdivision ordinance we were working on and what needs to be done in order to put. So the subdivision ordinance back on the table for consideration and suggestion. Um, there was a discussion with one of the board members who's also on the select board. Who talked about the scope. Of the Luso's work and his position was that the purpose of the Luso. Was only to discuss ways to make the Luso more streamlined and more user friendly and that was it. And my back and forth with him, that was in the context of discussing the subdivision ordinance, he was taking a position that the subdivision ordinance. This is not in the Luso, so why is that committee even discussing it? After that meeting, I wrote a note to him and said, perhaps I should come to the select board. And get clarity from the select board as a whole about what they perceive the Luso's role to be. Because the position that some of us took was that. The planning board is responsible for the subdivision ordinance and several other ordinances such as the quarry and that sort of thing. And so it doesn't make sense to be discussing any necessary rewrite or. Or amendments to any of these in any committee other than the Luso, at least at first glance. So he agreed that would be a good thing to do and I wrote to, I've got a follow up with him, I wrote to the girl and and the board chair. Saying, here's what's going on, may we discuss this at one of the meetings, so I haven't heard back and. So. I think it'll be fine, I just need to get. That, that was a discussion with one person and. And we just need to straighten that out. So, one radio.
What's the next Luso?
The next Luso meeting is currently set for October fifteen. Uh, yes. Yes. We have had, we, we have had conversation, a conversation about more than one a month, given the time constraint that we're now, we don't have that much time. Uh, but we definitely are at least gonna make the meetings run longer than the sort of hour that some of them have been in the past, so the meeting would be. A good two hours going forward to try to get. Work done. Um, I think we could use new members of the Luso, so if anybody's interested in also participating in the Luso or you know anyone else, then.
All of us on the board are.
Encouraged to attend, even if you're not, it does, I mean, sitting at the table versus sitting in the chairs, there's not a big difference, we try to keep them as.
Yeah, I don't know if the members of the board have noticed, but we're really a policy, not a process board. Not so much a planning board and the true policy is coming from the, from the Luso.
And that's even though the ordinance says that it is in fact a planning board that. Has to hold the public meetings and has to, the, and has to vote on. The proposed changes, um, and the Luso advisory committee, as I understand it, was originally set up because. This board has a substantial amount of work and doesn't necessarily always have the time to get to those. Broader policy and, and ordinance rewrite questions. And so it is an advisory committee, it's not a board that has its own authority.
It's correct. There you go. I looked for the last meeting and I didn't see it.
And I, and I don't know, is there some way to put it in the regular calendar that. You, you get on the town's website?
What's that?
The Luso meetings.
I did, I didn't.
I think they're usually on there on your website.
You gotta go under the land use advisory.
I, I meant, I, I wasn't able to view it on YouTube like I usually do with all the meetings.
You'd have to ask Kyle about that, I. I don't know anything about downloading of our meetings.
Well, there, this, we had that discussion beginning, this, the, the, that meeting wasn't recorded, it wasn't zoomed.
Oh, okay.
So, and we had that discussion about, about.
Makes it easy for us to follow with. But they're not.
It would be nice if they were recorded and particularly in part because nobody really wants to take minutes. Um, so it's, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of. Writing my own synopsis for myself at the end of the meetings, but I'm not.
He made the, the Luso meetings aren't the zone. I don't know if it's because it didn't work or.
No, we didn't, it just.
They are typically zoomed.
The other ones, yes, they are. Yeah.
Well, what I mean, what I mean by, um. I'm gonna try to get on the town's website. If you look at the town on deserve. And you go to the calendar.
Go to the committee.
Yeah, but that's confusing to people, I wonder why, I mean, all the other meetings are on sustainability committee, the planning board meeting, the select board meeting, the hardware committee. Why don't we also have the Luso meetings right on that calendar at the front? Who would I? I will do that.
It usually gets on the calendar a few days before the meeting.
Right, but that's.
Instead of being, it's the third Tuesday.
And when the agenda is. Is available, it probably just, at least, at least be on the calendar by then, I'll talk with Jennifer.
Has it always been the third Tuesday, I mean, if it's been kinda here and there, that would be why she wouldn't. Have that, you know, she gets the agenda once I get them.
Yeah.
And it's, and I send them there and it's up to her to post them, cause I can't have access to the weather.
They are posted in the post office, I have seen that.
Yep. But they're, yeah, but as far, I, I don't have access to the website, so I can't. My own page or any other pages, so when she gets it, up to her to post it.
I will, um. I'll give her a, a little look. If you can straighten that out, is that, I find that confusing, that's all. I think that's it, that's all I have to say.
Did you guys, um, see your next meeting packet that was on the table?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're going back to the swim club again.
Yeah.
This time it's from buildings.
Yeah. Any other other?
I got a question. Any, any thought to having a, a meeting one day a month instead of twice?
Wow. That's a big one.
There's nothing in the policy that said we have to meet twice, twice a month.
I don't know, I'd so.
It's gonna be a longer meeting.
Yeah, you know, you know, I. Pride myself on the chair's policy of trying to contain meetings to six to nine. And I think that, and we've all seen how. Drastically unproductive we've become as the night. That would be a.
Maybe it would be worth looking at. Keeping tabs on the length of the meetings that we're currently having, like, this is seven thirty.
Yeah, I would, I would ask the board to sleep on that one.
Yeah.
I would also point out things like. Raisin and certain subdivisions in town and things like that have, that one discussion. I believe Carl Longus was, uh, five PM to ten PM for Cory once and, uh. So, so when we have a controversial issue, it can be, it can take a full three hours and still not be done. And then to have other things on top of that.
You know, and then.
But I guess the question is. Are there, we have deadlines that we have to deliver, but are, is there any way to. Build in some flexibility so that if we have. Complex applications, then we have more than one, those months we have more than one meeting.
The board has the discretion to schedule extra meetings as needed, you know, the, the. Thing though, just personally, I, I would rather have two short meetings, two shorter meetings a month than one. Because also I think it, it conveys a. Pro, proactive image of the board's representation of issues before the town. With our jurisdiction and just everything kind of, feel like the fire hose to be funneling in. Through the funnel, you know. You're like, okay, we got all these things tonight, how come, you know, we aren't more accessible, I think we need to remain accessible for. Applicants and issues and. I think it just communicates better with, with better availability to the process.
I tend to agree with you, I, I, I'm willing to look at what the practical realities are, I'm willing for. Um, and whether or not there are circumstances in which we could combine meetings, I think if we have regular meetings, that becomes a problem too. Because it's hard for people to keep up with when. When, when we're meeting, maybe.
You know, I, I think there's a broader consideration there too, and like, there's, there's things that I think we could all agree upon that. I really, that we really should not be reviewing, you know, and I think it's. As what we review and what we don't review involves, I think that's gonna also increase. Our, our efficiency and the potential avoidance of those five hour hearings and. You know, or necessitating like, you know, the, it's so. The planning board's schedule just adds loads so much, I mean, you've seen it.
We're at the mercy of you.
Yeah.
One year where, went what, July and August with not, with no meetings, something like that.
With nothing and then.
Honey, do you keep, and do you have the time that the meeting? Yeah.
You know, whenever.
So we can go back and look over the past year or so and see how long. And look at that calendar and see what. It suggests, if anything.
I think of the other municipalities I've dealt with through our profession here, and when you hear of a municipality. here, and when you hear of a municipality only having one planning board meeting a month, I was always kind of like, how did they do that? You know, like, yeah. You know, just, why aren't they more available? You know, and I, I think it's our, we have a duty to the town and our part of that duty is availability.
Yeah, and I think not all towns are created equally in respect to planning board activity, and ours is particularly assertive in terms of
And, and I'll tell you too, that
The scope of them.
You look at the town and what's happened in the last five years of this town relative to, I'd say, the previous 25 years. I mean, there's definitely an acceleration of everything here. You know, and I, and I think it's, again, it's important for us to be accessible and involved.
Um
I'll meet at that.
If I could go back to the sake of completeness, one of the other things that we talked about at the Luso meeting was uh, Noel came in with a shoreline zoning map. And there had been a prior discussion about, um, somebody wanting, somebody having a shoreline residential five lot and and why can, why do they have to, all the way back on that five? Why do they, if they want to build a second structure, which would be a, a long way away from the 250, why are they not allowed to do that? Why do they have to have for an additional structure, an entire additional five acres in order to put enough structure there? And that led to Noel explaining that, among other things, any time you have any portion of a lot within the 250 shoreline zone, the entire lot is considered within the 250 shoreline zone. And if you wanted to get to the point where this citizen was suggesting that we should allow uh, areas outside of the actual shoreline zone to be handled differently, that's going to require an extensive consideration of how we construct our maps and how we construct our zones. And some of these things like that are, we have a comprehensive plan process that's kicking off. Maybe in October right here, uh, for the first of it, and those sorts of issues are better addressed, not by us and not by the land use advisory group, but by, through the comprehensive plan process, and that's, um, and so that issue, which was brought up at that meeting, I'm not sure it ever came in here, but issues like that are gonna be, if you will, turf to the, it seems they're more appropriate than
I, I mean, that, that's a DEP rule, and not only that, it doesn't matter if you change the zoning back behind the 250, let's say you go 250 is shoreline residential, whatever. Just an overlay maybe, because 200 feet by 250 is not going to give you one acre.
Right.
So, right, back beyond the, the crosshatch shoreline zone overlay. The ordinance says if the lot is wholly or partially within, it doesn't matter.
Right.
You know, you're still, you're still limited to development. That's gonna be restricted
Right.
to the shoreline zone, so that's, you can't change that. That's not us, it's DEP.
Right.
I mean, granted, you can maybe change lot size requirements from five to two, one or whatever. But you still need two times to develop a second house on the property. That isn't gonna change regardless.
Right.
If we go, you know, SR overlay, shoreline overlay to a rural woodlands two or whatever.
It gets in part to the other big issue that land use, hopefully the comprehensive committee will grapple with, and that's, oh, the overall density issue within, within the community. Like these, these, these lot sizes that we have. Um, there may, there, one can articulate a logic for them, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's a logic that serves the test, that this withstands the test of time and should be how we think about lot size requirements in the 2024 and in the future. So that's all tied into that. It's a big one, and we, we may see how far we get with discussing that, but alright, thank you.
Item six, Gail.
I'm a region.
I'm second. All those in favor?
Did you get that motion, huh? I got that one. I'll be right back.
Yeah.